All right, let's please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. All right, let's start off with the real call. Greg Smith. Mike Schneider.
Here.
Robin Simpson.
President.
Jason Miles Bond. Adrian Saunders.
President.
Lori Quinn.
President.
We have a form. All right. Uh, first thing we have on the agenda is to review and approve the events of the July 10th, 2025 meeting of the board. You have those in your packet to review.
I'll make a motion to approve July 10th meeting minutes as prepared.
Second, we have a motion second on the forward to approve the meeting minutes for the July 10th, 2025 meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Aye is have it. Next thing on the agenda will be the mayor's report. Everything that I have to discuss will be discussed under the new business agenda item. I will quickly suggest that form review of our current rate sheet. That's the sheet that delineates the charges for meters and how much it costs to put in water paths, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I'll be making an edit to that and adjust to that to add additional columns in field relative to electric service, um, construction meters and transformers and who can offer for what, depending upon what type of service. Uh, the eleven in the South Council, Justin Turner, our supervisor of electric partners, well, Brent Abel over at Palmar. So we'll have that hopefully for the next meeting for y'all to read. And least review, and that concludes my report. Next thing on the agenda, City Clerk's report.
Mine is pretty quick as well. Um, I did provide you a list of our bank account balances, and I just have this one. But, uh, after I printed this, I noticed that those two accounts that I opened at the last meeting for our USDA, they weren't listed on here. So I called the bank and they got them listed. So that's going to be coming around for you to look at. And that's all I have.
How is the BSNA update going?
It's going. Chris actually sat in on a call with me yesterday. We've been working on some utility billing information to get to them in order for us to be able to do the conversion by next March. And so I had him sit on on the call because he's going to be dealing with a lot of that. He's very knowledgeable with computers and all of that. So it's going to be very nice.
And we've gotten any bids back on the real estate yet? Any of the real estate inquiries?
No one has turned any in, but there's been a lot of packets taken.
Okay.
And I actually had someone come in and also get a packet of the same thing. I've got a lot of inquiries about that. There do, wait, I'm sorry, I actually know that right now.
It's on there.
Yep.
Tomorrow.
Does she have to like twenty?
I know last year there was like one question that responded.
We had one, we had one individual who was barred about the property six forty-one second. Is that right? Six forty-one second street? Anyway, they had a significant number of questions and, yeah, six forty-one second street. And I got them all answered, got back to her, so.
So it's a.
This individual wanted to build a house there.
By the ballpark?
Yeah. Yep. That one right down the corner.
I think the signs, Rodney, thanks for putting those up.
That one, that one's missed, but I put another.
It like draws attention. Got only.
Well, if it makes you feel any better, I had a very similar, similar situation last time I ran for office. Not sure I should have picked that, but I did. Okay, so anything else? Golly gee, boy. All right, we're moving right on. Next thing we have, oh, the city attorney's report.
Yeah, I have no report yet.
Good gracious. Authorized guest speakers, there shall be nine. There's none of record.
I had a quick thing from, uh, Brittany and Kennedy. Uh, she's wanting, uh. Oh, okay.
Sidebar going on here, I'm suspicious.
Never mind.
Okay, moving right along. The, uh, getting ready to go into new business now. Uh, the Monroe City Area Fire Protection District wants the board's permission to continue to use the building sort of across the street. It's a, it's a, it's a storage area. It's got a big old head door. It's kind of in between the, uh, what I would call switching station side of the, uh, substation on, where's that? Davis Street, South Davis? South Davis and Dover, is that right? It doesn't matter, Justin, I don't know. But there's a storage area in there that they still have stuff in. Still have stuff in, and they want your permission to continue to use it.
They just use it for storage?
They use it for storage, for equipment and stuff. They don't have enough storage space. They use it historically and, uh, very soon after, uh, the city turned over all the equipment, we requested them to vacate that area. They have yet to completely vacate it. Now they've come back and asked if the board would please let them continue to use it. They don't care if we have access to it. The only thing that I might suggest is that if the board, uh, decides to let them continue to do that, and I will tell you, I had, so had no problem whatsoever, I do think we should have them sign that document that holds us harmless in case them want the personnel or something happens to the equipment.
Are there utilities to the building?
I was going to mention that, yeah.
Okay, good. And so anyway, uh, that's their request to the board. Allow y'all to continue. Yes, John?
Are there utilities there?
Uh, there's lights.
Well, there's probably got to be some kind of.
It's a shared area. I mean, I don't.
Do we want to look at them at least paying us something to cover?
Who's, whose name?
The storage, I don't know that they're using any utilities. I mean, it's just, yeah, it's empty space.
Well, they were keeping stuff with water in it over there. So I don't know if they were trying to keep it above freezing.
I wish I could, I wish I could answer that. I don't know.
Yeah.
Do we, do we heat it?
It is heated, yes. We used to heat the back truck in there.
Okay. Oh, we had the back truck in there as well?
Used to.
Used to, not anymore?
No.
Do we have any store, any other space for that space?
Uh, I don't have access to it anymore, so.
Yeah, we have plenty of space right now, actually. And we have the bottom one, but first of all, space again. Now we have the other building that's still has a bay there.
So the whole harmless, John, would that cover if one of the fire department members were hurt or there was a fire, they lost some content?
Lost water.
Yeah, they'd have to provide us to give insurance and everything showing this coverage for liability and health.
So do the whole, we have to do a whole harmless if the board agrees, right? Okay.
And then I could look into the utility cost for that property.
I'll cost more money to figure out each month what their share areas and the cost of electricity.
Depends on whether they're heating it. I mean, if they're not heating it, they ain't got any.
I think it would be nice if we offered that as a kind of an issue to do.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we allow them to use that space, where they provide us with the whole harmless.
Wait a second.
A second.
We have a motion second on the floor to allow the, uh, Monroe City Area Fire Protection District to utilize the storage space currently, and while I will call, uh, call the, uh, white plant building. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries, aye is have it. And we will let them know. Now, the next thing we have on the new business is something that I mentioned to the board a meeting or two ago. I don't really know that we want to do anything this tonight, and it's going to be all as decided and want to. Had it put together, have you all got a copy of this?
I didn't bring it.
That's fine. Uh, but anyway, take a look at that. I, uh, plagiarized, uh, a city in Iowa and utilized, not verbatim, but a lot of what they had because it seemed to be very, very appropriate in it. Actually, um, addresses many, many, many things that I know I've observed over the years that created, uh, created more difficulties with the conduct of the meeting, uh, once, some conversations had, had begun in, in an open forum, uh, open forum, uh, section. That would be on the agenda and, uh, probably rehearsing, uh, they, uh, they actually, and I won't give a crap for it, they actually addressed some things, uh, that, uh, timelines, how you conduct yourself. Also, uh, rules for attendance, uh, cell phones, no side meetings, no discussions on what the board is discussing, uh, leaving, entering, leaving the room quietly if the, it's during a, during a meeting, uh, and not, uh, allowing, uh, unrequested address to the board from, uh, from the, uh, from the public area, public meeting area. Did a really good job. You guys take a look at it. Come, please come back with your thoughts and recommendations. I know one of the rules they had, I thought was pretty, pretty interesting, is that other, other than asking it, don't take this the wrong way, guys, but I've been here when he's booked up. Uh, and that is, other than asking a question to clarify our state, council members should refrain from entering a dialogue with the speaker. Time on the agenda is not intended for discussion between the city council and the speaker should not be used for that purpose. Time is for them to tell us something they want us to know or ask us something they want us to do. We wouldn't debate at that point in time. Other than ask for clarification, like, okay, what does that really mean? Or is there more to this? You know, maybe a lot of meeting questions that you would, something that they would say that you want to understand more about what it was that they were sharing with you. I thought it was really well written, that's why I'm on it. So you guys take it, review it, pick it apart, uh, do something, do nothing. We have to, I don't want to answer that. I know there's been people that say, by God, I come to the meetings, y'all have open forums, and I'm going, well, I think it'd be great to have an open forum, it's long, we can control it, and then someone reminded me that the guy that has this in control. So I'm going, okay, then we still need to have, uh, rules, need to have policy. This would be done by, this would be done by, uh, the resolution of the board, First Amendment to a new test and ordinance. That, that would allow, and John can correct me if I'm wrong, that allows, uh, the board to continue to operate under, uh, this policy until the board decides to change it up to including not even doing it, which is already on books. So it would, uh, give you a little bit of latitude, uh, for the future. And, uh, unless you have questions about it, I'm done with that part of it. Take a look at it, let's beat it up, and we'll get back together at a future meeting and see what we, see what we, what the board would like to do with it. So next thing we have will be the, uh, any other discussion on that? Okay, next thing will be the, uh, committee reports, planning on zoning. I'm on there and I'm aware of nothing, anybody, Greg's not here. Uh, parks and recreation. There's no one here. Is there? You have something?
Meeting got canceled.
Meeting got canceled. You think we should know what's going on?
I'd like to have rock from them.
You, you've asked individual members. Uh, what's going on here is, uh, uh, we would like to fix all the holes outside of and, uh, make that road look really nicer out there. And it's going to require what?
A four hundred, four hundred fifty ten.
Which costs how much?
Four hundred fifty-two dollars a load.
Four hu, okay, how many loads?
Ten.
Four thousand five hundred dollars.
Twenty-five ten a load.
Okay. Well, let's see what the board, let's see what the committee, the board are going to do that. Uh, see what that committee wants to do.
Might be a little less than that because I'm just, I don't.
Have you heard anything else, Hutcherson?
No. Mary Kendrick sent a note, an email about it, and she copied me, and hopefully it ever got back to me.
There, there's no payment issues or anything, is there?
I'm sure we're up. I'm not sure we're up.
We're just waiting on that. Well, we're, we're running all time.
Yes, we're probably out of it. I mean, that pet is dry weather, he said, takes about a week.
All right, well, hopefully Mary will, uh, Mary's, Mary's administering that, correct?
Yeah.
And well, hopefully she can get some answers out of it. Uh, economic development tax board, obviously one here, uh, that was left on the agenda for them to address the board if they need to. As a normal agenda item. Uh, next thing, administration committee? Nothing? Operations? You have a meeting on the thirtieth? That's correct? Next meeting, what's the next meeting on opera, uh, after administration?
After Board of Audit.
Right after Board of Audit.
That's what I'm going to.
One other meeting scheduled this month. Nope?
Administration is in August, uh, the date is in August.
All right, that, that was fast. This could be a record. Uh, department reports, police.
Um, our new recruit starts academy August fourth. Uh, we have pretty much taken care of all the items he needs to get going.
Okay.
Uh, we just have a few things we still need to order, and he's excited to get to academy and join the department.
Good, good.
Do we have a contract on him?
We have to have, we have, we're going to have to.
Yeah, John, did Zach send anything over to you?
Um, I made changes, I thought I sent it back.
I have not received it. And if it went to Zach, I don't have access to give it now.
All right, you two got to go.
Yeah, if you can give that to me.
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
All right. Excuse me, folks, I apologize. Water?
All right, first item is fire hydrants.
Go ahead.
Uh, so I, uh, addressed the board, it's been a couple of months ago, about the fire hydrant in front of the fire station, the one directly across the road. Uh, they have, uh, since contacted the mayor. I was not in any conversation, but I imagine it would make, uh, more like, when are you guys going to fix this?
They, they have requested that we please fix our hydrant cost for the fire station.
Okay, so, um, it, it's totally up to you guys whether we fix this or, or replace it or not. I got some costs, but, uh, we only had one hydrant budgeted this year, and there's a total of, well, including that, when there's a total of three that I need to get replaced. Uh, so what we're looking at is, I got, I got three different, uh, prices here, but I'll just go with, um, the cheapest, which is from Corin Maine. The, uh, a four and a half foot berry is three thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars for one, and a, uh, five foot berry is three thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars.
Do we know what's one of the need?
No, not until we actually dig. I, I normally just buy the five foot berries. It might stick up of the ground a little bit further, but then if the grade changes, you already have a little bit extra. It doesn't hurt anything to have more sticking up. You don't want it down below.
I get it. So you want the five foot?
Yeah, I'd like to go the five foot. Now, there was only, uh, three thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars budgeted.
Uh huh.
But I would like you to tell me where this fire hydrant needs to go because if I put it in front of the fire station where there's actually, the, I believe it was probably put there because the power plant used to be right there also, and it was probably put there to protect the fu, uh, that. There's one at the west end of the block, and then you go to the east, there's one at the, uh, I guess it'd be Washington Street. But the trucks normally have almost a thousand foot of hose on them. They can hook up to one of them hydrants, drop the hose, uh, because really the only thing that's protecting there would be, well, they, they wanted to fill their trucks. We have one, uh, right in front of Farmer's Elevators, uh, their, their office building, and there's numerous houses around there, and that fire hydrant does not work. Uh, the other one is at the corner of border and I believe it's summer. It actually got hit by a car and physically knocked off, and we've been needing to get that replaced.
I was thinking, okay, so, um, you just described three separate instances of where we have, uh, previously had fire hydrants and they are non-functional.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and it is our intent to always have at least one fire hydrant in stock, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to purchase four, uh, hydrants. And I propose that the board consider taking some of the money that we earned down at the wastewater pit. So since we officially, by ordinance, have a combined utility. Okay, we keep them separate accounting wise, but officially, we have a combined utility. So there should be more than adequate funds available to purchase fire hydrants. That's my recommendation.
Yeah, we'd be, uh, looking at four, uh, fifteen thousand dollars.
Yes, we would be. When was the one on Summer and Border hit?
It's been a few years ago.
Did we get any payout on that from the insurance?
I have no idea. I don't have, uh, anything on that. I know Zach did.
Turned in.
Oh, yeah.
He had to go back and look at it.
Yeah, Zach found the people, they ticketed them, and I'm assuming that there was some sort of insurance payment, but, uh, I have no, I believe Chris was probably in the city clerk at the time.
Uh, anyway, the fire department's request that can be replaced. The other ones, uh, I would actually have to go to the fire department and have them give me, uh, their input based on NFDA or whatever other standards are on fire hydrants placement relative to residential areas. My, my, my initial reaction or thought process is if they were there before, uh, less than the entire block, then we should, we should probably think about bringing them back unless you just absolutely thought that we can't find a way to do it.
Do we have somebody that tests them?
Yes.
You too, yeah.
We do, yeah, we flow test them, and that's when we find out normally when we flow test, when there's an issue. There are some other issues on someone, uh, some, but they're still fully functioning. Uh, there's one out the, all the way at the end of, uh, Lakeview Dry or Lake, uh, whatever, scoot runs through the golf course, right, right there by, uh, Ralph Lemongelli's house. Yeah, and that, that one there doesn't shut off all the way, so it's always full of water. So whenever you take the lid off, it'll pop off real quick, but then it still operates. But it's, it's one that's on the list to be replaced. But the one there at, by the farmer's office, it does, you know, you open it up all the way and it flows twenty gallons a minute. It's just, yeah, the, the valve has become disconnected, so. So, yes, so I guess the mayor's, uh, uh, suggestion is to, to buy four of them, so.
Well, and what is, I thought about, is there possibility of getting them repaired once we do swap them?
Uh, yes, I will do my best. Uh, Mueller hydrants, which all of your hydrants in town are Mueller's.
Yeah.
They, they are also old, and there's a brass seat in the bottom that is very difficult to, you know, come off, or, uh, like there was one over on Park Street, and we worked on it for a day or so, finally ended up breaking it, we had to replace it. But just having them in stock is, is very important.
I agree.
So I guess, uh, if you guys would allow me to do so, I would get, the, the, this pricing was on the fly, I called, I just called them up, they didn't know I was going to get four of them, so I could probably get them.
Yeah, I might be able to get them a little bit cheaper.
Yeah, I can play them against each other, so.
Where the board's pleasure is.
I'll make a motion to purchase four of, buy, what do you call it?
Five foot?
Five foot berry, yes.
Five foot berry water hydrant.
Motion will have second.
Second?
Motion second on the floor, purchase four of the five foot extension, uh, fire hydrants for both inventory and purchase of replacement motions are currently in battle. Favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The aye is have, motion's carried, you got your motion.
George, what's the individual cost of each?
Um, this, uh.
For the three foot and three eight seventy-two.
The five foot?
Thirty-eight seventy-two.
Yeah, again, I'm hoping I can get them cheaper.
Correct.
That'd be great if you could. All right.
Okay, now, next thing is, uh, uh, last meeting, I was asked to get, uh, cost of, uh, chemical, uh, uh, our cost of chemicals to treat a thousand gallons of water. Did you get everybody that, that sheet? Is that what I sent you?
No, no, I didn't, but I mean, uh, may I?
Yes, please.
Um, the cost of the chemicals, uh, relative to an amount of water, uh, that's lost, depends entirely upon the condition of the water at the time that it was treated. It, within his report, it varied between thirty-three hundred dollars and twelve thousand five hundred dollars a month, depending upon, is it correct or am I wrong?
Yes, that's absolutely correct.
And so it's, it's very difficult to, to give you a number that's correct. But what we could probably say, and this is where I, I allow George to, uh, immediately jump in the conversation, is probably less, never less than thirty-five hundred dollars a month.
That would be correct.
For all the chemicals?
Yes.
For.
For all the chemicals, for per thousand gallons, yes. Well, what, what we did was, we figured out five million. Yeah, based upon losing five million gallons a month. The, that would be, um, thirty, yeah, three thousand three hundred and eleven dollars. That was taking, taken off of a particular date, January seventh.
Right.
Of twenty twenty-five. On July fifth of twenty twenty-five, um, the cost was two dollars and forty-four cents per thousand, so multiply that out for the month, it was, uh, roughly twelve thousand two hundred dollars. Because during the summer months, when the algae's on and everything, we're, we have to feed a lot of oxidizers.
So you took, you took thirty-five hundred times nine, and then added three times twelve.
Yeah.
You'd about have a rough number. And, but I think, you know, I think it'd be really easy, maybe not, but, uh, fairly easy, uh, to conclude that we could probably get, depending upon what this cost comes back for the loss of, loss prevention, if I'll give the satellite and the groundwork, we could probably look at two or two, possibly a three-year payback, maybe less.
Yeah, I would venture to say less.
And, 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 and I'm, I'm, I'm trying to be conservative, but, uh, you've sent the information, have you sent the information to them?
No, 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 you.
Is that up to me to do that?
Uh, I can do it. You, you're the ones that's making contact with them. You sent it to me and I just reviewed it.
Would you set, would you set aside, uh, a few times longer schedule, uh, either, well, probably just do it next week, I'm sure tomorrow or April, but next week we'll set down and go over that data and figure out how we need to get it put together, go to get it sent back and sort of get an estimate. There's not a lot of companies out there that has, that do this, uh, have, have a satellite and all, satellites and all this stuff in place to do this. I want to, we'll see what it costs, and we'll bring it back to the board and, uh, and go over and, uh, determine what, what next steps might, might not be.
I mean, just looking at June, May and June from George's report, we've lost over six point three million gallons.
Water? Mm-hmm. I'm on your side, I won't stop it.
Hey, because it's not going to get you better.
Right, right, and we're assuming everything's leased.
Sure.
Um, you know, I, I'm, I'm watching a couple of them. Um, you know, I, I'm, I'm watching a couple different water meters just to make sure, um. We're actually auditing our entire, uh, we're, we're doing what we have information for to make sure that every meter. Is actually showing up on beacon so that everybody, that, that we show that has a water meter is getting a, uh. Or if there's a reading coming in and so on and so forth, so we're trying to do all that.
Make sure that, that, that getting accounted for that should be getting accounted for based on whatever information we can find. And that would be all the meter connections. And maybe there's some connections that aren't meters, I don't know.
Yeah, and then there sure could be.
And, and that, we'll continue to look for that.
Yep, and that's what we're hoping to find. Uh, we're using a, uh, overhead or a, a satellite. Picture of the town and we're going house to house and making sure that each house is showing that it has a meter. Making sure that endpoint is showing up in, uh, the beacon system so that then they should be able to get a reading off of that. Now, I'm not sure if it's actually happening and, and, uh, everybody's getting a bill, you know, that, that's, I, I have no control over that side of it.
If you look at May and June monthly billing, there is about six hundred thousand gallon difference. Is that because?
Probably can and water, uh, come, uh, the end of May was when can has started drawing, but in June they've drawn. Uh, continuous.
And I saw on your report, I guess it was the one for May, about Jellystone, um. Being filled or.
Yeah.
How to, how, how, ooh, how does that work? How do we?
Well, we actually have one, uh, six inch meter out at the corner of I W and, uh, Orchard Street. And the water flows through there and then it's, so can and water finds it from us. But they feed Jellystone, so, uh, essentially they can't get enough water on this side of their system. That's why they were wanting the Monroe City to build that line to come into town, cause they were gonna then tap into that and they wouldn't have to get water from you guys anymore. Uh, but, uh, so when they need to fill their water tower, they turn it on. They can't supply them, so they bring it from this side.
And do we know when the last time we looked at Canon water contract? I mean, we, we stay on top of looking at the rates through the residents, but I don't know when we looked at rates.
That has been done for a number of years, just have to study on my desk. And we have yet to sit down to determine exactly what we should do, but their rates are lower. Than our current residential rates are.
I think that really needs.
I, I will endeavor to get something.
Make sure we're not losing money on it, please, I mean.
Well, I can't answer that question, Mike.
Yeah.
All right, um, if we're, we're done with, uh, anybody have any more questions about the lost water?
Will you help me get the Canon, uh, water contract reviewed? Come up, help me come up with something that makes sense.
I will do that.
Cause I know, I know the difference. I don't know how to, I don't know how to, uh. I don't know how to characterize it.
Yeah, 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 normally on bulk water sales to a, uh, another system, it's normally discounted a bit. But as you see, when they're drawing the water, that's when our water is most expensive to produce, so. But, yep, we can do that.
We'll, we'll read the contract. Yeah, limitations are, there are restrictions to, uh, changing the rate, if there is any restrictions, what the timing should be, but we can do it at the right time. There may be on the contract at certain period each year that you have the opportunity to do something. I don't know what to get into, but I will work on that.
Can I ask one more question, please?
Yes, please.
Um, you talked about responding to a water leak out of Tugboat on Tugboat Drive.
Uh-huh.
And you found two trailers having sewer running out from under them. Do we know anything more about that?
I turned it over to the P D and I don't know where it went to, but that's all private. That's a, that's a civil matter, not anything the city needs to, well, the city as far as the water and sewer department, we won't get involved in that. But, uh, uh, yeah, you have raw sewage running on the ground.
Public health issue. Public health issue.
Yes.
And that's why the police department's involved.
Yeah, and then there, if there are ordinances on your books that don't allow that. Okay, that also be a building inspector. Okay. Cause our health ordinance is more under building inspector. Okay, yeah, that, whatever, you know, I normally turn it over to the P D because they can actually write tickets. And normally when the P D shows up at your door, uh, you know, they, uh, things get done. So, uh, that's just been the way I, I've been doing it since I've been here, but yeah, we can definitely get the, uh, hit, uh. Building inspector call. Um, just two more things, uh, getting ready to. Put out bids for the chloramines project out of the water plant. Um, there's actually two big projects out there. We're gonna kind of put one off. Because it's not as important as the chloramines, just because, uh, with what we got from the engineer was, uh. Not totally complete and it's taking all of my time to try to do an engineer's job. That we didn't get. Uh, so, uh, that, that's what we're working on, so by the time hopefully next meeting happens, I will have put it out for bid. And then probably the following meeting, I should have bids. And then, uh, still no grease being delivered at the, uh, wastewater plant.
Were they not happy with our pricing increase?
Oh, no, I, they, they were happy, but they were, i- i- if you read the last email, uh, during the summer. The fat stays.
In suspension.
In suspension and, uh, more really will, they, they decided to, uh, take it for a while. But they said, well, come winter time, they're gonna wanna bring it to us, but then that's really not what we want either. So, uh, we will make that decision at that time when they take it, so. If anybody has any questions for me, otherwise I'm.
I thought I saw something about one of the lift stations had a lot of fat in it.
In May.
Was that in, from May or from?
Yeah, there's, uh, uh, the one out at, uh, Mark Twain Center is very bad, but, uh. And you sent me that, that, that link and, um, we've just cleaned it. We clean it about twice a year.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, no, the one at, uh, up on Griffin or Griffith. That one is the worst lift station we have for, for being a small lift station.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah, we spent an entire day, we had to pull the pumps, taking out the flushable wipes that get stuck in underneath the impeller. Um, cause we amp, we amp them on a quarterly basis.
Right.
And the amps had increased, uh, from seven to eleven or twelve, so that it was having problems spinning the impeller. Pulled it and we've had to do that multiple times. I actually have pictures. I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to get pictures into my monthly report. I'm trying to take pictures of stuff as we do it now, so I can add that for your viewing enjoyment.
Real, real quick, what, I know it's impossible for me, what, what do other cities do when this stuff happens? Uh, where a customer files your system because they do stuff they're told not to do?
Uh, some, s- some municipalities actually will. Really spend a lot of time to try to figure out where it's coming from. You can put like, uh, uh, baskets in.
I get it.
And, and figure out, okay, it's coming from past this point, then you put a basket at the next point and. Then you kind of narrow it down. Well, it's still there, there might be ten people that are feeding that, but, uh. Uh, the flushable wipes, like I said, are not flushable. Um, yes, I know, it, it makes your bum be, you know. Be all nice after you're done, but please don't flush them down because they, they, they do, they, they break down just enough. To tie themselves back together and it's, it's bad.
Well, very well said, George, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Let your department? I have a couple requests, so. First, I'm gonna give you just some information. Um, our daily log and, uh, our outage log. So this log we had in the last year, twenty twenty-five outages, you can see they've increased. Last couple of months due to heat and due to trees. Uh, all these outages that I've started, we've taken care of, uh, without the need for mutual aid.
You've mentioned heat. Is it because they're using so much electricity or?
Yeah, the transformers in the summertime, they get overloaded because of the heat. Everyone's running air conditioners. Uh, and that, a lot, and a lot of our services in town are run, one transformer runs several houses. Uh, and that puts a lot of stress on these transformers, so you're starting to see it fail. And, uh, and water replacing. But that'll be for another meeting to, to buy more transformers, but right now I have some orders from the last accrue. You guys gave me approval by some last, uh, meeting and I got the purchase. They should be here soon, so right now we're doing okay with transforming. Uh, what I would like approval for this time is some underground wire. For a new service that, uh, we have coming up and for backup to. Prevent us from not having the right material when something goes wrong, especially in, in the subdivisions. This underground wire is, uh, is out there and we don't have, we have some backup wire that'll get us by. To fix the outage, uh, temporarily, but it's not the right size, so I'd like to order the right size. Got three bids for three hundred and fifty M C M aluminum underground triplex. And the cheapest one was three thousand, three thousand dollars, so.
Are they all the same quality?
They're all the same exact wire. One was five thousand, one was four thousand, one was three thousand. Just depends on the company.
Who was it that had the lowest?
Uh, the lowest bid was Arkansas Electric.
How many feet is that for? How many feet is that?
That's a thousand.
Thousand foot, yeah.
And, uh. They sell it in thousand foot reels. If you buy less, the price increases.
Yeah.
It's best to buy a thousand, even though we're gonna, you know, we're gonna use a hundred and fifty on a new service and, and if something goes bad out. Forty, it'd just be three hundred feet, but we have that backup.
Hmm.
So, uh, the second one is we have some troubled trees. Uh, we've been all week trimming trees and we'll continue to do that. Dread it out, all of our bad trees and it's gonna take us several months to get through them, but. Uh, we're working on trimming them, trimming them back, so you might get complaints, but it, it's necessary to get these trees trimmed back. Or we're gonna have more and more outage just come from the main top.
Matter of fact, I'm sure I am.
Well, uh, we like to go ten feet, but we, but if it's a sensitive tree, you know, I understand ornamental trees, people love the trees. Then, then we can cut it back to five feet, so it isn't so traumatic, you know?
No, I'm, I'm thinking I can make part because the tree that is in the wires isn't really the one that's gonna be causing the trouble. It's the, the simplest one in the middle of the yard that's gonna take out three houses if it's.
So the tree.
No, you won't.
The minor tree maintenance is we can, we can take care of, but I'd like to hire a professional to take out two trees that are just a little. More than we can handle. They're, uh, one's a dead ash tree. It goes over our lines, over a transformer. This is a main feeder. Uh, there's a garage right here, there's a house right here. I, I can trim trees, but I don't really wanna fall big limbs in between buildings and stuff like that, uh, so. I got some bids for this ash tree and the other one is a maple tree that, our wire runs between this maple tree and the, and the B of it. And it looks like they built the line twenty years ago and this tree just grew around it. Well, they've had an outage sometime in the past and they've taken an insulator tied to this tree, which is extreme liability. Uh, I wanna get it fixed soon. Uh, what we have to do is we have to kill the line, drop the wire, have them cut the tree down. And then we'll pull the wire back up, heat it back up, and then turn it away. So, uh, to me, this is, that's, this is a major, uh.
What is that, on one of the main feeders?
This is just a single way, but it's, it's a, it's something that needs addressed. It's gonna.
Yeah.
It's a possibility of someone getting hurt or the tree catching on fire, you know, it just needs to dress. Uh, it was a temporary fix that someone in the past did and they just went back to fix it, but the tree is, is, is great big, you know? So it's difficult to fix, so the tree has to come down. I have permission from the landowner, uh. Uh, he says it's okay to take this tree down, so that's what I'd like to do.
What tree trimmers did you get?
Uh, I got B and B. They gave me a bid. Uh, they were high. They were the highest bid. Uh, Baker Tree Service and he was lowest bid on, on the ash tree. And then Environmental Tree Care I got and they were the lowest bid on a maple tree. So I was gonna ask permission to hire Environmental Tree Service to trim the maple tree on Rogers. East Rogers and Elm Street and I was gonna ask permission for Baker Tree Trimming to. Remove the dead ash tree on Chestnut. Okay, how about this? Uh, let's go back and revisit the wire bids and see if the board will. Give you permission to. I would like permission to purchase a thousand feet of three hundred and fifty, uh, M C M. Underground triplex wire from Arkansas Electric for three thousand, forty-seven dollars, eighty-six cents.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion second on the floor. All favors say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion carries. Danette, you need any more information about that?
I'll just get the paperwork.
Okay, next thing you have is tree removal. Yes, I would like permission to have Baker Tree Service hire them to remove a dead ash tree on Chestnut Street. For eight hundred dollars.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion second on the floor to have Baker remove that ash tree on second tree. All favors say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Ayes have, motion carries. Uh, I'd like approval for a maple tree located on East Rogers and Elm. Uh, to be removed by Environmental Tree Care for the amount of thirteen hundred dollars. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We have Environmental Tree Care remove a tree on what street? Uh, East Rogers and Elm Street. East Rogers and Elm Street. Do we have that motion?
Make a motion.
The motion, we have a second?
A second.
The motion second on the floor to approve, have any environmental tree services remove that tree that he was taught. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Ayes have, the motion carries. I'm about to stop calling you that, Bobby. You know, what I'm talking about? Wait, does this? Oh, oh, well, maybe not.
Yeah.
Did, did, yeah, no one approved that, did that? You did. Huh? You did. I, I approved it. That's not good enough.
I would just.
Okay. All right, what else? So I have her for today.
Did we? What about the air conditioner? Our.
Wait, what?
Well, did we get, have we resolved the air conditioner issue on the start station?
Yeah, well, kind of sort of, that's, that's on me. Um, it was gonna be sixteen, eighteen weeks for anybody to get anything. Uh, Justin come in and said, hey, we really can't wait that long, so we, I. Said, go ahead and have him come in and fix it. So Peter's gonna come in, what, twenty-four hundred dollars, three hundred dollars? Get thirty-one hundred. Three hundred, yeah, and they're gonna fix it. It just. Any more hot days, something could blow up down there and, and then I'll be in trouble because I didn't, didn't do the right thing. We just.
It's cheaper than having your place other stuff.
Triggers. I hope you all, not, not too unhappy with that.
That's fair.
Yeah, that works.
You know, these guys have, uh, come see me once or twice a week. They're, they're telling me what they're working on, what they're doing. They're very, very proactive and, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased.
Thank you, yes.
This, this whole thing impresses me.
Yes. Uh, that's the first time I've seen one like that. And the outage log too.
Yeah.
The outage log's cool. Yeah, I like that.
All right, uh, for those of you who don't know this, my, uh, my greeting to Rodney is usually. Oh, here's Spindelot Rodney.
For those of you who don't know this, my greeting to Rodney is usually, oh, here's Spindelot Rodney.
I'm not gonna say money bank.
We all be first to ask and ask money, just under that. We'll wait till I hit you with this. First, the dumpsters, get up in the dumpsters, went in a week.
I'm so disappointed, I'm happy, but I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think next year we just need to call it a week. Yeah, yeah.
The president of the board, our president of the board contacted me and suggested that I ran in another dumpster. And I was ready to do that, but then your president's father said he had talked with him, we weren't gonna do that. So I got out of that conversation.
Well, it's had two weeks or six dumpsters.
I said. Six dumpsters, yeah, it's had six dumpsters.
I don't think so, so he looked back and then he sent me a stack. Yeah, it did, it said that.
You know, I think Rodney's gonna tell us that maybe there's something different next time. It might be beneficial and I'll let you have it for.
I've been talking to Danette, we discussed it. I think it ought to be an enclosure, have it open during the business hours and Danette come out and show up utility bill.
Yep. And an ID.
And an ID, and I have somebody sitting there with the vacuum, she'll be dumping the right stuff in. I talked to a lady over at Merco, she's real good about what other cities do. Some of them just do today. But I think a week, show utility bill, have a person right there and it's open 7:30 to 4:00.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because she was shocked that one delivered Friday before it started Monday. I said, well, this one's already full. She said, full? It's in an open area? I said, oh yeah, it's running out.
That landfill in Iowa's not open anymore, is it?
I mean, well, it used to be one handle, but it's a transfer station.
Yeah.
Is that what it was? Because I know a lot of people would take theirs, a bunch of stuff to Iowa.
Okay.
And I don't know, maybe they were taking it to Kendra's or CTS.
It might have. It used to be a one handle too, that was years ago too. Just something we can talk about sometimes.
I think that's a good idea.
They come in there, anyway, they picked up the dumpsters and only had one little pond left. You know, after that, I was thinking sometimes you might get a little more, but. Somebody put it out.
Yeah, pretty good.
Yeah, it worked out really good. And Purple Wave, everything I told you last week, so only things left is the bumper truck and it runs to August 5th and I just look for it to come up there, it's up to 10 fives.
10 five?
Yeah, it jumped from two, we're gonna make 104 to 10 five.
We're gonna make 34,000.
Yeah. And the last days usually really jumps.
Yeah, last few hours.
Yeah, last few hours, if you don't watch it.
Spend your bucks.
Very good, you worked very good, very good. Oh, yeah, here's your spend a lot right here. I talked to the mayor and since it's getting late on the Mill Street project, we've come up with a list of roads to name.
What, without discussing this with the board, we had, we had, we had a couple hundred thousand dollars outside for the Mill Street project. Well, right now, we're waiting on getting the easement agreements from two landowners. One landowner, which is the Catholic Church, the Jefferson City, the office city, said they sent it in. Well, it'll be old, we can't find it. And all the people that, this sounds familiar, all the people who were involved in approvals have left. And so now we may have to go through that process again. And there's one current landowner that's a private citizen that wants to have a meeting. So we're gonna set up a meeting. We thought we had this all done. Or much, much shorter this spring, but as it turns out, apparently the answer is no, it's not. So we had a couple hundred thousand dollars that we've taken, that's a rough number, folks, out of the, out of the CapEx. We have a, we have a CapEx fund that's supported by tax revenue. You agree? And I would, everything about City Clerk, make sure I'm making sure. Spending money we don't have. We thought that we might take this opportunity to put some money back into the plan for street paving. Now, this week they went on Long Street, did a cutout in some really rough areas that are crumbled, broke, made it look a lot better. Rodney has a hipless, the old hipless prioritization of streets that he would like to get paid, I guess you call it, do you call it paving?
Overlay.
Overlay, overlays. And he has went and got some cost information, so please share what you have.
Yeah, well, I've reached out to two or three just to see what the bid was and I haven't heard from him. Say, I have this one, he's the big one. He's working on it, he wanted to know from which street to which street. You know, I'll give you the list of streets. I've got about 6,000 feet, which is roughly around 120,000 square feet. That's what they usually bid on, so. I got him, I've got another smaller contractor, supposed to be coming up meeting with me. The third one, he doesn't do it no more, take it off.
Did one of you call you today? I think one of us, one of them.
Yes, one of them sent me a text, he wanted some better locations or where to go, where to go. Anyway, I called him, he knows what he's working on, so I don't have no cost, maybe the next meeting I have an actual cost, what they give us where a foot or higher, I think that's how they bet. So maybe, well, I got like North Berkeley, Block of Ed, North Monroe, East Dover, Oak Street, that bad rut on it, Long Street, the East End, and West Court. I just tried to pick out the worst of the worst.
What was the last one?
Uh, West Court. It's just a small section, it's dipped. I was hoping they, they need to wedge it in over there. There's, give us. Yeah, that's what I, it comes about 6,000 feet or 120,000 square feet, because I took at times a 20-foot road.
What is, what you get?
Well, it's dipped out and you gotta wedge it in there to fill the void.
Okay.
And get it level with a man, come over. Because if you come over like that, it's just.
Want to do it again?
Yes. And with the material, you know, that's something we can fix.
There's, one other issue we talked about briefly, Rodney got a lot going on. But one other we talked about briefly was there is a, it's the last road going east and west, goes over railroad tracks, comes down, go around Hampton Gate Gates. It's a bus, it's a bus area.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That was awful. Is that, is that the county line, is that West County line or?
Uh, South border. Or West border, it's to South border.
It's terrible, you're right.
And so we're looking, we've been talking about going in there and it's, it's, it's way past due.
It's, it needs.
It's awful. And you're actually looking there. Going there and cutting that out, digging it out, full base.
And, and just doing that, uh, combating it and leaving it, being done.
Putting base on, I talked to Philip over here, he was figuring it out. We figured we could cut that down and then come in with some base rock and just leave it and never in the future if you overlay.
So we'll get all that information, get it on costs and come back to the board and see what we can and cannot do. We'll have a discussion with City Clerk and take a look at where we're at on the CapEx so far this year that the board is saying.
Which road is the, the trucks using to bring the grease in?
I think they're used.
Are they using Oak Street?
No, no. They come down either summer or winter street and then they do have to turn on Oak Street from that right by the railroad tracks to, but in that section of Oak Street, there's no issues. Everything, the issues are from the railroad tracks to. Truly, yeah, Court Street to 30 Business 36.
Drove that.
You know, there's just. We're, we're trying to attack areas both in electric, distribution, streets, we're, we're working on, we're working on improving our water grid facility. These guys in this board, if you haven't been keeping track in most of the stuff. But, but we're making inroads, we're making progress, we're getting things done. And we're gonna keep on going. We're gonna keep trying to fix the things that are broken, fix the things that historically have been problematic, whether it's in their own streets, in the electric department, in the gas department or in the water plant. I've got brand new sewer, sewer system and that's pretty awesome. So we're making inroads, we're making improvements and this board, you guys should be, should be pleased with, with, with the progress that's been made to date. And I know that I appreciate y'all's support.
So the city wins the race.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next thing we got is building inspector's not here. Want to take a look at that, that report. We've had several visitors out there for. Oshkosh right now. Something was lost in my attention. And then I just want, I want board members to take this information under consideration and do what you want with it. It was lost in my attention historically during the two weeks of Oshkosh, where the FDO out there still be being managed full time during the day and sometimes called in. Historically, the city has increased compensation for that month by $200. That's something that you all might wanna think about. I'm not sure if that falls under operations, maybe or administration, I don't know. But you all think about that and maybe the next time we get together, I'll bring it back up and see if you all.
Jimmy, just say it tonight. What you say tonight?
What do you want to do?
I'll make a motion to increase the airport manager's pay from the month of July by $200.
By how much?
$200.
Wait a second. Here, we have a motion, second on the floor, to increase the compensation of the airport manager by $200 for the month of July in response to the additional time that's being spent at the, at the airport to serve our customers for Oshkosh. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries, eyes have it. Okay, Mosswood.
In your packet, you'll see a request for reimbursement of chemicals. You'll also notice in their budget, this year for chemicals. If we reimburse this complete request, it would be over on their budget line item by $2,257.78. According to their contract, it can be approved at your all's discretion. It says if Mosswood requests more than the 25,000 received fertilizer and chemicals, be required to present the request of overage to the city. The overage amount shall only be dispersed and approved by the state council.
And we've already approved some, haven't we?
Yeah, we, 14,000, I think, is where we're at in the budget, around there.
I'm sorry, what?
Is what we've spent so far this year, around 14,000.
We've already approved that.
Okay, and then if you, if you do that, it'd be $2,257.4 for what the contract says for chemicals.
Right.
Okay, now, I'm, I'm sticking with particular. The contract says that they must come to the board and request.
And that was my recollection.
Excuse me?
That was my recollection, but I don't know.
Well, okay, I can tell you.
Yeah, they'll be required to present the request of overage to the city.
Okay, so they need to be aware that they're old.
Okay.
And then they will have to come up here. If you follow the contract to the letter, they would need to come before the board and request the bill. What else?
In the meantime, do you want to approve the difference of what's available, the $10,098.67?
The F2M.
That would make sense.
Yeah.
That would make sense.
Yeah.
We need to vote on that? Oh. Need someone to approve that?
I was gonna say, I mean, we're already just fulfilling our contract. You're all free to vote on it, but I don't think.
They've, they've made it.
I get it.
Historically, they've always voted on it.
Okay. On any expenditure?
For Mosswood.
Oh, okay. Okay, so you need to, okay, so what you're looking for is a motion to approve the request for payment up to.
The contract.
The contract amount on Kenny. Okay.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the floor to approve payment or reimbursement to Mosswood for up to the total amount as shown on the existing contract. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second on the floor, to approve the reimbursement to Mosswood for chemicals up to the current contracted amount. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The eyes have it, the motion carries.
And I'll reach out to them.
Okay, anything else on Mosswood? All right, cool. That. Cool, that's awesome. Has anyone heard anything positive or negative or anything? Seems like things are going pretty smooth.
Seems busy.
Yeah.
Seems busy, right?
And I have not heard any complaints, I'm just proud of it.
That's good, that's good news.
That's so good news.
Yes. I think, I think.
You're telling me you want her to keep treating to get her back.
Tell her to get it done.
Joe ended up with one day there.
Okay. All right, Dan, let's move right along. Next item on the agenda is a presentation of bills and approval of payments.
We had a little issue with printing the checks off this time for payment, so I was gonna pass this around, but there are some gaps in the check numbers when they were issued. We had to void some checks, they were gonna issue some checks, so.
Paper jam. It's an expensive sensor for a pool. Or tool for the pool? Sideneer supplies?
As for the chemical side, the chlorine feed.
Oh, to monitor how much it's feeding in?
Yeah, it, it was, it was something in that system.
I make a motion to approve accounts payable for July 24th.
I'll second.
We have a motion, second on the floor, to approve the accounts payable for July 24th, 25th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Next thing on our agenda is unfinished business.
Mr. Mayor, I will, I, I forgot one thing in my report. There was a fish kill at Round J Lake. It's a gizzard shad. It, it has to do with the dissolved oxygen in the lake. What happens in the summer is the algae during the day is blooming and actually putting off a lot of oxygen into the water. But then whenever the sun goes down, the ox, or the algae has to consume the. But then whenever the sun goes down, uh, the ox, or the algae has to consume the dissolved oxygen out of the water. And it drops down and the fish can't live without oxygen in the water. So it's, it only touched this species. Um, there's no danger to our drinking water. The Department of Conservation was out there today. Spent quite a bit of time out on the lake just checking it out. And, uh, they actually contacted the mayor and they said, if we get any concerns or complaints. Please send them to the Department of Conservation and they will explain that there's nothing that the city did. There's nothing really anybody has done.
Are they a little fish like a minute?
They're, they, they can be smaller, but they're up to eight, ten inches.
Didn't the Big Lake have some problems with that too?
The Big Lake did, uh, have a fish kill. I don't believe it was shad there.
Yeah.
But yeah, they got some of it.
Yeah.
Yes, uh, Mr. Reed used to call me, uh, first thing this morning, uh, and, and to explain what was going on. And then this afternoon, Missouri Department of Conservation released a press release. So it's, it's, it's being communicated. And if anybody had any questions, we can certainly contact us or we will, we will get them off the Department of Conservation. I thought it was very, very nice of them and very proactive, uh, as they explained the situation. There's no, no danger, uh, to us. There's no, uh. Zero, uh, do I sign this now or later? Uh. No impact to the, uh, the drinking water quality. There's no dangers or health, uh, issues to anyone. So I was very pleased that they did that. I thought it was very proactive.
Anything else is everywhere to share. Every, it's horrible to share the algae.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, everybody's lakes ponds covered in it.
I have a compliment on Route J today.
Yeah.
Um, actually two different ones. It was an open discussion. We have a truck driver that comes for, and spends his time in his spare time up there. They kayak. He was saying with you. And it's his, one of his most favorite places in state of Missouri.
Well. Uh-huh. Well, I was, uh, when we were doing our research for, uh. Trying to improve the quality of fishing, uh, at the, uh, at the Southland. Oh, by the way, I'll be back for another two hundred dollars at the ball for more fish. But, uh, I was advised by, uh, the, uh, fisher's file just to handle. That Route J Lake has the best bass population in more of these areas. I have no clue. That's the place to go. I have no clue.
And you just said that on CCTV.
Excuse me?
You just said that on CCTV. And it's out there now. Yeah, it's great. What a great plug.
Yeah.
But I'm just talking about this. Yes, sir.
Sir, if we could delve back, because I was going for a bit, we're suppressing issue. Can we delve back to the police department?
Sure.
Perfect. Um, kind of requesting, we need, uh, four new batteries for our portables. Uh, cause we've pretty much burnt through at least three, we're down to about three batteries.
Okay.
Um, price range is about six hundred dollars for the batteries.
Each?
New for all total.
Okay.
Sorry.
So I, I guess it would be really not very right to ask what happens if you don't have batteries.
Then we don't get to talk about that.
Hmm, not good. All right, so do you have a plate, do you have a business that you can only purchase them from?
Well, there's. We're working on the exact existence from where Motorola's, Motorola Solutions shows out of stock, but there's a couple of companies. Um, like where we had our cruisers done, that deals with Motorola. Also, I believe Sound Solutions in Mexico. Being local and whatnot, I believe has access to Motorola products.
Okay, so you're talking total three batteries and total cost six hundred dollars?
Four batteries.
Four batteries.
Four batteries, six hundred dollars?
Thereabouts, yes.
More space.
We were, from the high prices that I did locate online, I went to the highest one, but Motorola Technologies. Just in case we could get it cheaper. Yes, sir.
B and C Technologies and Bowling Green is worth your time to look into.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Board.
I make a motion that a lot of police departments purchase four batteries for the radios, not to exceed six hundred dollars.
We have a motion on the floor to allow police departments to purchase, uh, a total of four batteries. Might be two six hundred dollars. Second.
Second.
We have a motion second on the floor to approve purchase of four batteries, police department at cost, not to exceed six hundred dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say, all not in favor, say. All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries. Thank you, Sarge.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Anything else?
Oh. I don't, Adrian, you're swigging by. Excuse you today.
No, he wrote, he did a test run today.
I know it wasn't my dad.
You were safe. It's okay.
All right. Anything else on, uh, unfinished business? All right, uh. At this time, we will talk about moving into, uh, closed session.
I'll make a motion for a closed session.
So we have a motion on the floor going closed session. We have a second.
Second.
A motion second before going closed session by voice call.
Almond Snyder.
Yes.
Almond Snyder.
Yes.
Yes.
Do we need a short break?
It will be very quick. I mean, it'll be. Real quick.
No break, no.
I don't need a break.
I'll wait, wait for Mr. Mike to take down the COVID notice and stuff.
CCTV.
CCTV.